Good morning, everybody. We'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Cottonton County Board of Commissioners to order. Today is Tuesday, June seventeenth. It is nine AM. And we will begin this morning with our Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Myron Johnson. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Please remember to silence your cell phones so they do not disrupt the meeting. And then don't forget to turn them back on following the meeting, of course. Call for public comment, which may be submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or on the secondary number, which is six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Any conflict of interest items?
No.
None. Action to approve the June seventeenth. Approve, uh, motion by, uh, McElhaney, second by Gable. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for an action to approve the June tenth minutes.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Brings us down to item number six, monthly reports, and we'll get the Director of Equalization, Shauna, up here to give us the report.
Hi Shauna.
Good morning, Shauna.
You guys miss me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Always.
Have you been gone?
Okay, so we've been pretty busy the last couple of months. Um, we finished up all of our board changes and got those sent into the Department of Revenue because they double check everything, um, that gets changed at boards. Um, we sent in our final abstract for the twenty twenty-five assessment year. And then we've also sent in our first six mate, six months of sales for our twenty twenty-six assessment year. So we already, we just finished up twenty twenty-five and we're about six months into twenty twenty-six already. Um, the appraisers are currently out working at Lake and Pesca. It seems to be going pretty well. Um, we got our budget, my budget completed and turned in. I'm currently looking or working on the performance appraisals for my staff. And then we did end up having, um, two properties appeal to O H E. Our O H E cases are next week. Um, you'll see a request to go to peer next week, and I'm pretty sure the State's Attorney's Office already put one in. Um, Deputy State's Attorney Jill Thronson will be going with. And we'll be getting together either later this week, beginning next week to go through it, but it it's, um, the Leebles property in North Lake Drive Edition. So it's the, the house, the kid's house, and then the mom and dad's, um, extra storage lot across the street. So getting ready for those.
Have you been through this before?
O H E, it's, yes. I have.
Can't remember last time we went.
Last time we went, I looked, it was like two thousand thirteen. Um, but there was quite a few years in a row that we did, so.
Yeah.
I'm kind of dusting off my cobwebs a little bit here, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty easy when you have other counties that go yearly, like Pennington, you know, many hot hot and stuff and stuff. You just reach out to them and they help you out quite a bit, so.
Good.
So, yeah.
Well, good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, more questions? Anybody? Nope. Okay. Thanks, Shauna.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shauna. We want to the Highway Superintendent, Randy Falvey.
Good morning.
Morning, Randy.
I don't know that mine's gonna be quite as excited as Shauna's was. But we've been busy. We just finished up crack sealing our roads. Uh, weather permitting this fall. Uh, once it turns cold again, Mother Nature Cooperation cooperating with us, excuse me, we're gonna try and do some more on twenty-three, which was our micro seal we did this past year to make sure we keep it in good shape. Um, we just finished up hauling P rock from Con A to a couple of areas in the county in preparation for our chipping, which we're gonna start right after the Fourth of July. Uh, we did start mowing this week, again, in preparation for the chipping. We'll be doing all blacktop and gravel roads. This is just the top cut for now.
And you're doing a good job. Who's ever run on that outfit tell them, hey, I kind of checked it out yesterday. And some of the grass is getting pretty tall. But that new mower that we bought for you is working well the way it looks.
It does a very good job.
It was really a good job.
And Mother Nature with all her moisture so far has been playing into it pretty well.
It really helps to get that top cut off.
It does. Actually, huge difference.
You see that wildlife come on the ditch, you know, before you hit it.
Yes. Uh, we did do some culver work on County Road six four. We did a complete replace of one and, uh, fixed the ends on another one. Uh, to keep it in line, get better drainage working in the area. Uh, we got both of our scrapers up and running. Uh, preparation for sale on Purple Wave, believe it or not, one is a nineteen sixty-five unit and the other one's a nineteen sixty-eight unit.
Just broke in.
Just broke in.
Is it still warranty on those?
No, it just expired just weeks ago. Yes. But believe it or not, they fired right up. They haven't been used and I want to say between twelve to fifteen years was probably the last time they actually saw a piece of crazy, so. I was impressed. Um, bidding will close on our two dump trucks that we put on Purple Wave next Tuesday. Right now, one is listed at eight thousand, the other one's listed at forty-one hundred. So last minute, the bids usually go up considerably. People wait until the last minute, so. Um, our office administrator, Lori, has been back now full time after some health issues. Uh, we did get, uh, fully staffed at this point with our mechanic that we hired, which is nice. First time in a while. Unfortunately, with that being said, we're gonna have another retiree at the end of this month. Brad Schwinger, uh, just shy of twenty-five years. Uh, will be retiring. We are gonna promote from within-house. Uh, one of our Watertown individuals is gonna be moving, not moving, but transferring to Florence. Uh, he's been an operator previously. We got him from our county. And I'm working on performance appraisals myself right now, and that's all I have. Questions?
Okay, thanks, Randy.
Thanks.
Hey, let's, uh, let's jump down to, uh, item number seven, Randy, since you're here. This is the cell phone stipends for the Highway Department?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and cover that since you're here. What's this for?
Stipends for.
Yes, yep, cell phones. So there are three, actually. I don't know if you want to talk about them or do you have that, Randy, or not? Okay, so we have Wade Jordan, who actually started in April, so we need to back up and give him his stipend for May and June. It, and he will receive twenty-five dollars for each of those months. And then the two new hires, Keith Ischens, do I say that right? And then Joseph Lafran Boys, each of those would be, uh, twenty-five dollars monthly cellphone stipends, which would have just started now in June, so.
Motion by Gable, second. Second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, let's move on to Facility Manager. Get Steve over here. Mull and graph. Morning, Steve.
Good morning. Fine. Um, we're gonna start out, um, with the egg building. Um, staff has been continually setting up and cleaning for multiple meetings and functions that are occurring throughout, uh, the past and upcoming months. Um, trying to get a fence and gate, um, done, um, on the west side of the barn. That will help prevent, uh, automobiles from driving through the lot too fast because the driveway approach, they come speeding through the regular parking lot and going through. There always has been a gate, but since the construction, the part of the fence was removed and the gate was removed of the parking lot, so that is what I'm got on the line item stuff below. Um, the south, uh, parking lot, uh, is scheduled to be chip sealed in the middle to late July is what I was notified from the city. Um, government buildings, uh, the generator was wired to the courthouse on Memorial Weekend. Um, electrical team, um, has been scheduled for load tests and testing the transfer, and I have Thursday, but it's Thursday, June twenty-sixth is when they're gonna come in and do that load test. Um, and then, um, I had it to be have the courthouse closed, but that got all revised yesterday and it didn't update that, so. So it'd be on the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth of, of June.
Well, they have to shut the.
Well, what they, what it, what it will be is, is they're gonna do a load test. The load test will run for about three, four hours in the afternoon. They, they test the how far it can go before, you know, it has any issues or possibly issues, how much load it can take. Then, um, in the evening after five-thirty, what they'll do is do a transfer, um, from the generator to the courthouse, so shut it down and, and then do it. So it'll probably be a temporary little bit of delay causing the power to, and some of the servers and something like that to shut down when this little transfer happens. Um, they said it like about six seconds, one delay, so. Yes, um, I have an email set to go the day prior to this event happening, so.
That might also trip the fire alarms.
And it might trip the fire.
So we'll have to be aware of that.
Yep. Um, park, um, there's been nine hundred and sixty-three reservations as of, uh, the end of Sunday night. Um, eight hundred and seventy-eight were done online and eighty-five offline reservations. So more and more people are utilizing the online reservation system as we keep going. Granite, um, some of those offline ones is the, uh, rental of the buildings, that's not online, and a couple of them other functions, so. Um, I think I might look at increase putting the, those facilities online next year. Um, revenue for as of then was a hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents so far this season. Um, it won't be until after the Fourth of July where I'll really start getting a comparison of compared to last year and this year. That's because last, they were able to do some pre-booking on a couple, yet on a couple of them yet from last year, so. Um, weed spraying, uh, with bag and a couple of weeks ago, right now we got about twenty-five to thirty percent completed, and so we have for the spring season. Last week, did a plant ID tour, um, near Garrettson at Palisades Park and the surrounding area with forty-five, uh, or forty-six individuals attending that function. I will be checking leafy spurge beetles this week for having a collection in the next two weeks. Um, been getting plenty calls wondering about collections. Um, near Meckling, South Dakota, la, um, there was a collection that was conducted last week, but they had good collection results from that. Um, going on to West Nile, uh, we'll be setting up traps in, in a couple of weeks or while we, or when we start noticing an increase in mosquitoes. Um, a couple of communities have requested to be fogged prior to the Fourth of July events for. Um, I do know that, uh, um, more and more people have been starting to notice some of the mosquitoes is coming out. It's pretty thick in the grass when you walk through tall grass. Um, also, the city Watertown, the, what I receive from them, it's been increasing now in the last week, so. I would say with all these rains and stuff like that, once we start getting heat, we're gonna start seeing a huge increase. All right, I have in my notes, um, Emerald Ashore has been detected in Millbank, South Dakota. Um, that was put out last week, um, so there is a quarantine in place for Grant County. Plus, um, I have received a couple anonymous letters of weed complaints about the northern section of Watertown and the new development. Um, there is quite a bit of tall weeds and, and some, some noxious in there, but a lot of weeds. Um, I, they have been starting to do some mowing, but everybody needs to know that it's not mandatory to spray, but they just have to keep it mowed or keep it preventing from spreading. The majority and the majority of noxious weeds, everybody has to know too, that, um, they won't go to seed until starting in July. And everybody is worried about the leafy spurge all yellow. That actually really won't go to seed until mid to late July. Um, the Canadian thistles will be starting, they're getting pretty close to budding. They're gonna start to bloom probably in the next week or so. Those are the first ones that will go to seed, and that will be probably the first week of July by the time when they go to seed.
Leafy spurge is probably misidied as angia mustard, too.
And that is exactly, yes, there is a lot of mustard this year, and yes. And then, and up in that region up there, there's a lot of mustard up in that new development area. Um, but, uh, and then, um, wormwood and so bad, it is starting to get tall enough, starting to turn white, but that is a plant that won't go to seed until late September, first of October. It is one of the longest growing plants of the season that we have. Um, it's, won't be actually start to flower until about August, September before he's, it flowers, and it'll have little, little yellow flowers on, so. Just to give you a little heads up on, on that and little um, word of how the weeds, when they go to seed, so.
Starting to notice a lot more Canadian thistle.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Well, and the Canadian thistle, you'll start seeing some of it show up when you start getting the drier years, because when you have the wetter years, it likes growing in that wet area, and then when it dries up, that's when the Canadian thistles start coming up through. Um, and part of it is, is Canadian thistles are a deep rooted plant, and it likes that low, lower, wetter area. And part of it is, is because the ground also it gets, uh, compacted, and this is a plant that deep roots, and those are indications of highly compacted areas, so.
Okay. Good information. Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I do.
Are you done with your report?
I'm done.
All right, let's move on to item number eight, discussion possible action to approve quotes for a chain link fence at the extension complex and the courthouse as budgeted. Steve?
Um, I have been reaching out, trying to reach out to get some fencing, um, uh, people to turn around, put chain link fence out at the extension building and here at the courthouse. Um, the, it's the replace the chain link fence that was at the extension complex that was along the drive approach, and so we had that blocked off the street and then up against the parking lot. Um, and then also the one here at the courthouse, um, it is to secure the generator, and so we had, so nobody can get into that area and to secure that east side of the building. Um, but, uh, the one for the, uh, extension complex, the quote was three thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. And I think they might, they on separate, they're together.
Separate.
Separate, so.
Do you want to take these one at a time, since they're two separate agendas?
It, it. Well, other, otherwise, otherwise I can, I'll give the list, six thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars for here at the courthouse. Um, the biggest difference is the one here at the courthouse is, um, ten feet high. So it's a shorter distance, but it's a lot taller, bigger.
So the question that I have about that, well, I guess we can see if we got a motion and we can talk about it. Let's do a motion for the first one, which is the extension complex. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any discussion on that one?
Yeah, uh, I'm looking at this and, and like, you know, that when they describe the, the chain like bits, that it's got nine gauge by two inch K K fabric. This is gonna be chain like fence. It's not gonna be the fabric fence.
No.
Yeah, just.
I, 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 what I wanted to say is a very strong fence along there, more or less just because it's, uh, of all the snow that gets pushed and piled up along there, so, yeah.
So where does that fabric come in?
That I could not, I could have to ask that question for sure. I think it's, yeah, I think it's the, yeah, I believe that's what it is. I'll, I'll call and I'll ask why, what, what the fabric is, but.
And the reason I ask, there's some, some fences are being replaced with a fabric.
Yes.
And just, I think we're looks and whatever, but I did, I just checked it on that.
Yeah, I will ask that question, being that you brought that up, that's why, but I think it's, I think it's just the material.
Okay. I, question, where? Where exactly is this fence at the extension?
The, it is from the west approach that comes between the develop, the houses and then the, um, uh.
So the one that used to be there.
Yeah, the one that used to be the southwest corner of the barn, yes.
But it doesn't have a gate?
Um, there is no gate. I am gonna turn around, put a post and take, go and put gates of different gate, like a
Like a.
Yeah. What I'm doing is, is I'm taking the gate, couple of gates that we don't utilize out at the park and putting them, and they're by a two by four tubing, and so we had to go across their white and got reflectors on it, so we had, we don't utilize two of them out there.
Well, I thought, I was just thinking, I thought that's where it was.
Yeah, there was a gate, there was a gate of a chain link fence gate, and that thing was always tough and always to get moving open in the winter time, and but I wanted to have something that was a little easier to, to open, so I'm gonna utilize the two by, um, two by three or two by four, um, uh, pipe that was out at the, of a couple of gates out at the park. Um, they were in the entrance. Now that the bike path goes through there, those gates are not there no more, so.
Okay, ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries on that one. All right, second item, which is the galvanized chain link fence for the courthouse.
Motion to approve.
Checking it. Motion by McElhaney, second by Schwer. Any discussion?
Somebody had a question.
Yeah, it's, it's. Oh, sorry.
Ten feet high and.
Ten, ten feet high because it matches what's remaining around the jail, around the detention center fences and so that, just so that matches. Then also to prevent anybody from climbing up and getting around, getting in, in and so yeah, that's, that's the biggest reason.
So my question, just for clarification, this fence is next to?
It will go from the corner.
Over here.
Yep, it's over here. Yep, no, it's, it's, it's over here along the sidewalk, and it'd be from the corner of the existing, um, detention center fence up to the corner of the courthouse, so it would block off the generator, um, all the gas units and everything, so. And then there will be a gate put in there where the sidewalk goes through.
I, I'm not a big fan of chain link fences. I mean, I don't mind chain link fences, as long as the contour fits the, the bill.
Right.
Right, and it looks good.
Yes.
Um, I know that we have one over there right now, and I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that it's gonna look.
Yeah, it, well.
You know, ni- nice to the public, right?
Right. I mean, yeah, chain link fence kind of makes it look, but it is a secure, one of the secure ways. The other way would be is probably is to turn around and went and turned around and got an iron fence, you know, with black and everything. Um, I was gonna estimate that would probably be about fifteen thousand.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot more, and I understand, we're trying to be fiscally responsible.
I had thought about that, but I thought.
And there are some things that you can do to make them look a little nicer with those colored slats that go down between the, the chain.
And that could be a possibility to put that in there, so.
Okay. That's all. That's all I got. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Steve.
Not gonna have a pool in there that we're gonna have a couple of.
No, no, um, just a heads up and so they are gonna turn around and finish.
Okay.
This makes sure. They're trying to plan on finishing the landscaping out there to get all that stuff cleaned up and get the dirt and get something sown in there this week along there, too, so.
Steve, what does Troy sign? These are what? Do you have something else?
No, there's, there's nothing to sign it, just, just for approval, so. Yep.
Anything else on the agenda for you? I don't think so.
No.
All right, let's move on to number nine, discussion possible action on an agreement with Unified Just Judicial System for access to Odyssey Court Management System.
Morning.
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 Good morning. Angie Coligdun, um, with the Community Service Office. Um, in my work with, uh, trying to get some of our grant programs going, including, uh, adult diversion and pre-trial services, I have reached out to the Unified Judicial System, or U J S, to see if we can get some access to their, um, criminal database, which is where they file all their court cases, and so they have agreed, um, on a contract with us here to allow us to have access to criminal cases that have any open security. Um, and the reason for that is, is so that when we are looking at doing bond hearings in the morning and looking at what people's charges are and what they'll be going to court for and what their bond conditions are, we can just access that and look it up so that we can complete our paperwork. Um, bond hearings are early in the morning. We'll need to do that before the courthouse opens or things like that, and so they have given us access to public criminal cases on their system with this contract, so I'm requesting um, permission from the county or action on the county to approve the contract.
Second. Motion by Gable, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion?
Questions?
Yes.
Um, so, um, did, well, does it cost anything?
Free. It is free. Important piece.
Then second is when I, when I was working with the jail before trying to get the, the Odyssey, just trying to figure out how to get this stuff to, where you can, you know, configure a port in Odyssey to, um, to be able to see what's like, who sentenced, when the jail was sentenced, who was, or stuff like that.
Correct.
It was pretty hard to do because the Odyssey system had a set, they have set reports, whereas the system at the jail uses Circa or there's another name, something square, so.
And full square.
And square, and so there's a, there's an ability to configure the reports in that system, the jail, and that law enforcement jail system, so I just something to be, I mean, have you seen other counties have success with this?
This is how, um, other counties do, and we will not be providing any information to the system. We're just accessing it to read, um, bond conditions, court schedules, what they're charged with, past criminal history in South Dakota, those kinds of things, and that will allow us to do our paperwork and documents that we need to get to the courts and to the attorneys.
Helping things become more efficient.
Um, the other thing I would add is if it is approved, they want an electronic signature, so they will email out the contract.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion in a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, so I can have that for minutes.
All right, we have an action to approve a fireworks show permit. That's item number ten. It looks like it's in your packets.
Yes. Um.
For July twelfth.
Yeah. This is pretty typical. Uh, this individual has asked for this before, and obviously if there's a burn ban on at the time, you know, it, uh, that will take precedence and I, this will become null and void. But, um, so the date is, uh, to the.
I have it.
July twelfth. Should last about two hours, gonna be at four, six, three, four, five, one hundred and sixty-sixth Street. Should go from about seven thirty until eleven thirty PM.
Just where is that? Mile and a half southeast away room.
Jared Burke is the person this time.
And he has, it's pretty typical. He holds or is, uh, been in charge of quite a few of these.
So, and this comes with the approval of the South Shore Fire Chief who signed the permit and Sheriff Howell also signed it, so. Motion to approve by Gable.
Second.
Second by McElhaney. Any further discussion? Once again, that's on July twelfth. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Courthouse, uh, following the state guidelines for state offices to be closed, and the governor's recommendation will also be closed on June nineteenth, is that correct?
That is correct. That is tomorrow, Thursday, June.
No, that's the day after tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Thursday, June nineteenth, that's.
June nineteenth, the county.
I've lost a day or something.
Courthouse.
Yeah.
Code prep day, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to have a day of recovery, so that's Friday.
So rapport is two days.
Yeah.
Only Thursday, June nineteenth.
Juneteenth, the offices will be closed. It's all county offices. Yep. Um, number twelve, action to approve abatements, number thirteen, action to approve claims.
Yes, um, so I have a couple of different, I would like to have, once again, the claims that are related to the jail done separately from the other ones. You have those in your packet, uh, we have two to Architect Inc. And then one to Tegra. In the amount then for all three of those in the amount of four hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-three dollars and nineteen cents.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Schwer, any further discussion?
Question on this Tegra one, the five, five hundred and some thousand, that's already been paid or cuz it says total due this invoice at the bottom is only twenty thousand.
Yeah, but it's dollars, it's seven of twenty-seven, so.
Oh, I got you, okay.
But they say it was, they say this month, that's the idea.
Any further questions? All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then the other claims, you have that in your packet as well, there's a list of those, uh, you'll see time clock plus. That is for the addition of a Lad Tech and that was to interface the sheriff and detention center schedule into time clock to help with that. And then I also added on our health equity monthly maintenance fee uh for twenty-eight employees, three dollars per employee. So the total amount of claims uh is fifty-seven thousand, nine eighty-seven, sixty-two.
Move to approve.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Johnson, any further discussion? The only question I would have is, when is this time clock gonna be? Like, we're spending a lot of money on this thing, we haven't even been able to punch in once. What's the status on that, can someone give us an update?
Well, they're working on this whole integration with the scheduling and we're getting close, I think, I don't know. Yeah, yeah, well, and that's why then we got that discount last time because of the delays. Um, yeah, it's just been because of this whole adding a Lad Tech and this was something new. We're kinda like a pilot on that, that has not happened before, that they've been able to integrate with a Lad Tech. So that's kind of where the whole um issue has been that we're delayed.
Do you know, Mr. Chair, so I understand that, that can be, that's a new thing, I can understand that it takes some time, but um what about the rest of the integrations, like so with the different shift schedules and stuff like that, that'd be something they're pretty, pretty familiar with.
Yes, that's pretty much all in place, we're just waiting for this because we can't move forward till this is all figured out, so, yes, the rest of it's.
Okay.
We're, we're doing good on that.
Mr. Chair, so I'm assuming we can't utilize any of it until it's all done?
Right, right.
And then this is the, this is, we're talking about integrating the fobs, that way, basically the fobs that we're using already, okay.
Right, and I believe Steve has those ordered, so. And then the hard time clocks are here, so then we can get those in place and get those up and ready to go, so, yes.
Okay, looking forward to having that done and in place, um.
We have a motion second to seven forty.
Yep, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Automatic budget supplements?
Yes, so we have that for the community service, this was for all the way from January till now, just did them all in one lump sum. This is money that is coming in, um, we just need to supplement her budget for the E R A. Two funds for rental for individuals in the amount of two eighty-four, five oh one ninety-three.
I'll move. Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by McElhaney, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, personnel changes, number fifteen.
Yeah, we have several of those, these, you will see quite a few, I don't know how you wanna do these, but these are all the annual review step increases, um.
Take them in one motion.
Okay, so I'll just say their name, yeah, well, so they're all step increases, do you need the amounts or just say names? If you want that.
Names is fine.
Okay, so these are the state's attorneys, Joseph Thronson, Jamie Monson, uh, Katie Moes, Christina Solom, yeah, I need my stuff, they're sticking together. Uh, Scott Holsky, Perry Leifert, and then in the register of deeds office, Ann Rasmussen, Jackie Manning, Mary Franson, and Jill. And then also in the WIC office, Angelica Lederbrand Anderson, that is all of our step increases at this time.
Motion approved, second.
Move to approve by Johnson, second by Gable, any discussion? And if the public's interested in the amounts, it will be listed in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, there you go, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, let's move on to travel requests, number sixteen.
We have one, Director of Equalization, as she mentioned, to go to the O H E hearing.
Hope to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, it's a budgeted item. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, uh, anything going on this week that we could have a quorum?
It is a annual meeting of the Sioux Rural Water System tonight in Castlewood, uh. I'll guys go to that.
Okay. Anything else, GOP or anything coming up?
Oh, yeah.
I think so.
Today uh is election day for the city and the school board, so.
Good point.
I personally have to get up there and vote yet, so I hope don't see three or four of these.
So do I, and it's at the high school, not the extension building, it's at the high school, so go to the high school.
And then tonight they will be up here, you've seen, um, it'll be you, uh, utilizing the tabulator to run the ballots through after seven P M. So I don't know if any of you planning on coming up here for that, we will have media up here, so. Also, so, um, Thursday is dairy month, so g- um, Dairy Palooza, Thursday Night Live. If there could be a quorum of you there.
Dairy Palooza.
And then both wagons in town. Next Monday, that's the twenty-third, we have a planning and zoning meeting and that usually just automatically appears on the agenda. But then on the twenty-fifth, just to remind you, and I don't know if any of you would want to attend, I'll be there, it's a STIF meeting. And uh, that's at the first district at eleven o'clock and you're supposed to let them know if you're coming because I think they do serve uh sandwich and what that is, for those of you that have never been to that, we have been, the D O T comes in and shows us all of the proposals for work that's going to be done in the next couple of years. And uh, if you're interested in finding out if your road is gonna be uh serviced uh by the D O T, there's where you'd find out. And it's uh, it takes about an hour to get through all of the, the uh proposals.
Is that open to the public, Mark?
Uh, I don't.
For district, I don't think.
I think, I don't think it's open to the public, but the commissioners.
I'm sorry.
Commissioners can attend.
Yeah.
And but just uh follow the office if you're gonna come.
And the reports, the, the, the reports get put online, I think it's on the D O T site.
Okay, let's move on, anybody have any, I'm sorry, Tyler.
I didn't say, hopefully our generator uh test doesn't affect that STIF meeting.
That will be all right.
Scheduled at the same time.
All right, let's move on to old business, number eighteen, anybody have anything for old business? Anything for new business? Anything for the open public? I don't see any calls, I don't see anybody else. Anything from commissioners for the open? All right, we do have a need to go into executive session at the request of, I don't remember who. Oh, Commissioner Gable, and that's for the purpose of personnel.
So move.
For motion.
How about going on executive session?
Johnson, second by McElhaney, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we're turned into executive session, we do not anticipate action to follow.
Hey, hey, mom, think close, but this, you just can't, there'll just be next door.